It's past 10 o'clock and I apologize for being late, I was running a little late. But thank you all for being here, we appreciate it and certainly you all are welcome. Go ahead and call this meeting to order, let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present, everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First item is the minutes, you all have a copy before you, I don't know if you all have the justice to read or not.
Second.
Second to approve, discussion. All in fair please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is claims, Ms. Guerra.
Hope to pass.
Second.
And second to approve, discussion. All in fair please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our report, is there anyone from out of town that would like to give their presentation at this time, or certainly welcome stay. Victor, you want to wait?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and go down our agenda. Gas Department, Ms. Guerra.
As a question, we're asking for a few things for next motion.
Tax Assessor. Ms. Alina, congratulations, this is your first meeting, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for being.
You want to use a podium for the audio for the internet? I think.
No, but it's so that the cameras can pick up, because this will be passed through our webpage, so they can hear.
Okay, then you will find this form, that it will give you the information as far as the collections are concerned for the November, for the November of 2016. Collections as per October the 16th, the MMO and the current and delinquent taxes is stated there, and the totals are $6,096,7,798.61. Now, it's a division of 14,357, and it's a total of the 42,000 of our goal of 88,000, 88 percent, I'm sorry, of our goal. So up until now, we've collected 42, 42 percent of the 88 of your total goal. The next page will give you a breakdown of the tax collectors for the MMO, farmer and market interest and sinking, the drainage department and commissions and recensions, the hospital, the city of Escobares, the maintenance operations and interest in sinking, and also the line barber attorneys fees. On the next page, you will find, it's a page like this, it will help you understand and compare all the taxes that have been collected for each entity. And on the last, on the last set of pages, it will show you the monthly reports and collections and dispositions of the county, velourum and occupation taxes for the tax assessor collections. It will be the current, on this part right here, the delinquent, and also the advances that are checks that are being made.
Which page is that, ma'am?
This one. The very thick one.
The very thick.
Very thick one.
No, 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 it's a.
And it'll give you the advancement checks that are being made to each entity for the November collection.
Judge, last time we were here, we passed a contract for the delinquent tax attorneys and fiduciary attorneys here.
Yes.
And it stated to be the normal rate going on the, of the collections on delinquency. What is the, what is the percentage they're charging?
I think it's 15 percent.
15?
Yeah, that's, that's the norm.
Okay. Because I heard that it was, it would go up to 18 if it was, that's what not supposed to be passed.
No, the, the normal has been 15.
15, right. And I said, well, I don't know, but I could check. And.
Yeah, and I remember specifically asking what it was, and they said, it's the same as always.
In Hidalgo, they charge 12 percent, we went to 15 percent, Hidalgo and got here in the valley. Some parts they charge 15, some parts they charge 12, but somebody asked me, he said, I understand they're going up to 18. We didn't see the numbers, but you know, it's supposed to be 15 percent.
I know some parts in the valley go as high as 20 percent collections, but ours is, it's been 15 for at least 18 years.
Okay, and just to let you know, Lime Barber will occupy a desk in my office probably at the end of December, beginning of January. This is to help collect all the delinquent accounts that we have, uncollected accounts for the, for the businesses in Stark County, and that will help you, you know, if we collect more, that means you have better revenue to operate your, your departments better. So that's in the interest of the Stark County.
Your Honor, and I have discussed, last time I went back, one last week to pay my taxes, and I met with her, about the return mail that she's got a bunch of boxes.
Yeah, I was gonna talk on that.
Yeah.
On that return mail, for some reason, it happens everywhere, I don't know if you all saw in Hidalgo, they had over 10,000 letters returned to them.
Right.
And the media picked up on it, they didn't pick up over here. But I think maybe what we need to do, Ms. Alinas, and certainly it's up to you, we can pay it out of countywide, put some ads in the paper, maybe one in English, one in Spanish, advising people that it is their responsibility to make sure that they pay their taxes, whether they receive a statement or not. It is their responsibility to keep the appraisal district informed of their current address. Just because they don't get a statement doesn't mean that they're not going to be penalized because they didn't come and pay.
Because of the interest.
Yeah, but I think we need to let them know before January, the end of January, because that's when the interest goes up.
Because my brother-in-law called me, he's got property here in the county, and that he has not received his tax, tax statement, I said, well, they already sent them out. But it's your responsibility, go by a tax office, and you can pay them there. He's always, they always have sent him the tax statement, why this time they didn't. But at the same token, you know, is it not this responsibility to the delinquent tax attorneys to go out there and grab all those return mails, because they're already delinquent, okay? They're delinquent because they've been returning for many years, right?
Right.
They're, they're responsible, for them to go check out all those, all those return mails and say, okay, this is, this tax is supposed to be delinquent. But, I mean, we look on the, on the record of the deeds, or whether there's an owner, or where are the owners, or actually, is anybody else paying taxes on the same property? Is it a dual?
Again, I go back to what I said a little while ago, it is the responsibility of the taxpayer to inform the appraisal district, because what the delinquent attorneys will do, and our office also does the same thing, we pull the records from the appraisal district as to what deeds are recorded there with the address that's recorded there, and that's all we have. You know, we, the delinquent attorneys, they have no way, for example, if I move to Oklahoma or wherever, they have no way of tracking me as to where I am now.
But let me tell you something, let me go back, they say that you have those properties that have been delinquent, I mean, let's say for, for, for six years or 10 years, okay, you got, let's say, José Morales, that he has paid taxes because the return mail comes in for the last five years, well, the delinquencies should get those files, go check out the property, if it's his illegal owner, and file a lawsuit, if you can find my publication, and put it up for sale.
And they do.
They do?
Yeah.
So then what are this, I mean, all this still is pending on here?
Yes, I have, like I mentioned to Judge Vera, I have four boxes of return mail, of return statements that are not being, this is, this is taxes that are not being collected, and I don't know if it's every year, or it's only this year. But my plan on this, my, you know, I'm going, I talked to Ms. Guerra, and they have a system, they should help us as far as finding who this, this, these owners are, who the addresses and so forth, so I'm planning to take all, all these return statements over there, so they're just, they won't be lying around in the office just.
Because if it's dual assessment, then we got a false report on the delinquency, that means that they're, they're not taxable, they're not taxes collectibles, so the delinquent amount, it goes way back down.
Right.
And what affects is the school district, not us.
Right. But this has been going on, I don't know for how long.
I understand that.
I'm planning on doing, I'm doing a difference on all these statements and all these accounts that are not being collected for this coming year. So I'm hoping to be successful on this, and if we are, we'd be, if we collect at least half, half of the statements that are returned, we're good.
Is that right?
Yeah, what I told Ms. Alinas when she went in to tell me about this problem was, my advice was the first thing we need to do is contact the chief appraiser at the appraisal district, and, and let them check those addresses, make sure it was not a typo or whatever from the deed to the address that they send us.
Right.
And there might be a few of those, but I don't think there'll be that many. After that, then the thing is, maybe turn it over to the delinquent attorneys and let them start fighting lawsuits, or put a for sale sign on the property. You know, nothing, you know, seems to motivate a landowner than to see a for sale on their property, and then they come, why are you selling?
Well, they'll start next year, they'll start with that.
But, your Honor, the thing is that if there, is it a true statement what they're sending, I mean, maybe.
It'll never be a true, 100 percent true statement, Commissioner, and we've been through this many times in the past, you know, I've been here 18 years and it's been here since then.
Because of the undivided portions.
Because of the undivided porciones that we have in the county, if, let's say you own a piece, a tract of property, and I come and I tell the appraisal district, I want to pay taxes on that because I also own it, and I've got a paper that says I inherited 100 acres in this porción, the appraisal district does not have the right to tell me not to pay. So, you know, they can pay three or four different people on the same piece of property. By the same token, it goes in the, on the flip of the coin. If they want to charge me, and I say, well, tell me where my property is, you know, and so I don't have to pay. The delinquent attorneys cannot sue me because I, they, I don't have possession. So the undivided porciones is what kills us, and that's the reason our collections usually run about 88 percent. Because a lot of it is undivided porciones, and we're the only county in the state of Texas that has undivided porciones. Hidalgo has porciones, but they're divided, Zapata has porciones, but they're divided, we're the only ones that, for some reason, our porciones never got partitioned the way they should. To do it now, you know, would cost in the millions of dollars. So that's, that's the situation that we have.
So that's my report, gentlemen, if you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Alinas, and hopefully we can, you know, help you with, with your goals, and we can get more tax dollars.
Treasurer?
Okay.
Sheriff's Department?
Morning, County Judge, County Commissioners. Revenues for the month of November 2016, 137,733.
Our federal fed prisoners went up this good.
Yes, sir.
That's very good.
Today's count is 116 instead of, compared to 105 on, on the 7th. But it fluctuates.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, thank you.
County Clerk?
If you all have the report in front of you, if you all have any, any, any comments, if you have any questions.
I guess any questions, you could call Mr. Onezadless. Thank you. International Bridge, Commissioner?
Okay, the International Bridge, total revenue from traffic for the month of November, We have an increase of $60,564.50 for the month of November 2016 compared to the month of November 2015. We show an increase of $8,262 on collections for the month of November 2016 compared to the month of October 2016. Rent receipts, 850. Currency exchange success, $258.57. Border Patrol deported aliens, zero. Total other collections, 1,108.57. Total traffic collections, 218,457.50. For a grand total collections for the month of November 2016 of 219,566.7.
Any questions?
That concludes my report, I think we're doing a little better.
This, this has the increased rates that we passed?
Yes.
It took effect already?
They remember all every time they pass.
That's all right.
Don't worry.
It's only for a little while. Any questions, Commissars? Elections?
Good morning. On the elections, the only thing I want to report is that this is not a by law issue, but what happens at the end of each, each election, all the subdivisions provide us with voting, who voted, so that we can add it into the, into our program teams, and it'll give you a history, in this case, like if myself, it'll tell me that I voted for the school, I voted for the city, I voted for the general election, or whatever, and it gives me a history of each, so that way, if a subdivision or someone wants to know if so-and-so voted for the general election, it'll tell you, you know, yes, they did, because it's a history. The, we're going to, ISD refuses to give us any information. We've called all those sources, they said, no, they don't give us. So what's gonna happen, there's not gonna be no history of the school district of how many people voted, or who voted. So I just want you to be aware of that. But again, it's not written by law, therefore, there's nothing we can do. It's a, it's a.
But why would we want to know who voted, who didn't vote?
Well, what it does, it gives you a history of all the people who are voting on a regular basis. Let's say, I say, the history says I voted for the school district, or I voted for Escobares, whatever, it would show that I voted. But what if I didn't? Well, my question is, why would my name show up voting for?
Well, you think somebody went and voted for you instead of, the voter fraud, you're saying?
No, it has nothing to do with fraud, it's just a history of, that you voted, it's not gonna tell you who you voted for, it's not gonna tell you.
Okay.
But it, yeah.
I mean, if it shows that I didn't vote, I mean, I should know that I didn't vote, you know?
Yeah, but this case, and what it gives you is numbers.
Okay, the numbers, that's what they want to tell.
Yeah, so all you want is numbers, that way you know, if the city of Escobar comes and says, how many people voted for Escobar, I said, well, this is the, the information you provided me. The general election, this is the information that was provided to me.
So, is that information, you gotta forward it to whom?
It's, it goes to the state.
Oh, it goes to the state, the state that wants to know?
Yeah, that's it. But there's no law that says they have to do it, but I just, in case anybody comes and asks for information, it's not, we're not gonna know who voted.
Yeah, but when it comes to funding from the state, those numbers are good.
Yes, sir.
If we don't have those numbers, that means nobody voted. So they don't give a darn. Now, we show them that we're voting, and that there's enough people involved in the elections, it can make a difference as to whether or not we get funded or not, and you know that.
Yes, sir.
So that's why it's important. Now, they don't want to give it that way, you know, because they'll get it.
Whatever.
But it shows very poor attitude on their part.
Yes, sir, I, I, like I said, it has nothing to do with, with fraud, it has nothing to do with anything like that.
Nobody's talking about fraud.
Because that's what makes our numbers when we ask for funding from the state agencies.
Yeah.
They, they want to see.
Well, yes, sir, because that's, that's what'll happen, is those big organizations or the state will pull numbers from teams. But that's, that's all I have as far as the election.
Any other question, Commissars?
I've done it.
They want to close your voting places, but that, you ain't gonna get no numbers anyway, you know? So.
Well, I don't want to go there again, Commissioner, but we never, we never wanted not to close our voting sites. What it was, was the way it was handled, and by the way, that case is not closed, we're still pursuing it, because it set a precedent that anybody can come into the county for future administrations and say, I'm gonna use that building, and we have absolutely no say-so. That's what's at issue here. They had schools they could have used, you know, it wasn't like that, or if they would have taken the proper channels, you know, it could have also been done. But I refuse to let anyone come into this entity and say, I'm gonna use that building because I want to. It'd be like us going to the school or to a city, Escobares, and say, I'm gonna use your community center whether you like it or not. I would never do that. One and the other, it's not right, it's just not correct. And, and, you know, I, I think.
Your Honor, and to your respect, I think we have used them before, way back before, we have done it prior, on all the time we have done that, the school has used them for three or four times before that, so I don't know what's, what's the difference, you know?
Commissioner, they might have, but they were, but they asked properly, they just don't say, they passed it in their commissioner, their, their meeting and say, we're gonna use these buildings without asking us. That's what's at issue.
There was already set up that you weren't gonna be lending to them?
No, sir, no, sir, there was never set up. You know, they, they had a meeting in which they acted on it, that they were going to use our buildings without ever asking the court, and that's not right. It'd be like me saying, I'm gonna use your backyard to have a party without asking you. Would you allow that?
Hell, no, but like, we had done it before, nobody had asked them, we always used.
They always ask.
No, no, sir, they never.
Be impetuous.
No, sir. See, they were about to.
I've been here 18 years, and for the last 18 years, they've asked permission, they've asked permission, and we've asked permission from them. Anything else, Ms. Onezad?
No, that's all I'm doing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Veteran State Programs?
However, my, my staff will be getting with the commissioners, because we got a reply on the FEMA, remember the FEMA that we wished this?
Are we getting money?
Yeah, we're getting money.
It's, it's, you know, they're gonna give us basically, roughly, like 92,000.
Each commissioner?
No.
What do you, what's on that one?
That was a grant for FEMA, for emergencies, and we, you know, somebody wanted to.
I bet only my claim, no?
No. It was everybody's went in together, and they said, because of the number of people that, they can only give us like 92,000. However, I want to clarify some things with them on how we can spend it, okay? And, and that's when I'll get with it.
Okay, but those 92,000 for one precinct?
For the end?
Divided by four.
For precinct number two?
So, I, I wanted, this is, this is.
Twenty-something thousand?
This, this happened.
Well, let me tell you something.
Market change.
But with, with, with twenty-something thousand, you can, like, what we need, you can find a decent dozer to help, they're available to, to do your, your fire break.
Yeah, but specifically, they had indicated, that's what I wanted to. Yeah, well, I, I wanted to clarify, we would like to use this 92,000 for certain things rather than what they said that we should use it for.
Pero, I mean, that's the purpose of it, to have something to prevent the fires, and, you know, here out there, we had fires up there, you cannot go in with your low room, we have done that, but it's very dangerous, and when you go to dozer, you can, you know, do the fire breaks before you get up there. I mean, and you can buy a decent dozer with only the blade of the dozer, you know, for twenty-something thousand, or you can end up with another $5,000 or $10,000, and each precinct buy something decent or decent.
It can be used for, for equipment?
Well, that, that's the thing, when I read the email, and I got this on Friday, when we got the information, it just says approval for command center or generators.
Command center.
Can you?
No, I know the command center, I don't tell the number, that's what we need.
Can you call over there and say?
Yes, sir, that's why I just wanted to briefly tell you that I want to get with everyone, that way everybody will know.
Yeah.
That way there's no surprises on, while we do our report next week. The same thing with the, the CBG Colonia Grant, remember the one we're working on right now? It's, and this is, I just got that this morning, it's gonna be like 250,000.
Market change.
So.
Let me ask you something else. On those, on that project, can we do force account?
On which one?
When this is the Colonia, this is the one.
The CBG? I think so.
Because I just bought some equipment to pave.
We did it before.
And I bought equipment to pave, and I can do the paving, I, I got people that have the knowledge, and I can do it, but I used to operate a paver, so.
Rudy, Rudy, but I thought on the CBG funding, that now we had to apply for a minimum of 400,000.
Well, I was on the, and they even told us that we could expect maybe up to 800,000. So I was really.
Yeah, but, but under the gentleman's agreement, they said the base was, you know, and again, I'm not swearing to this, but I recall that they said 400,000, not to exceed 800,000. So, so, so we agreed on that?
They're not in that committee?
No, it's, I'm the chair.
We got information, this information was provided to us this morning from Juan Rodriguez.
And does it cut the funding even more?
That's what I imagine.
We spoke to Juan Rodriguez from STDC, and he did advices that they were not giving the funding that they anticipated, so right now the max is 250,000.
That's the max? For pre, that's for, for each county?
For each county.
51,000 each.
So that's about 51,000.
Again, you know.
We spoke to him this morning, he was gonna provide even what we just got.
So, so what, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna talk to all these entities and tell them, you're not giving us anything to operate with.
You know, at some point, we, we need to reevaluate the COG that we're in, you know, we're, of course, in La Riva, and they've been great, I have absolutely nothing to complain about. But on the gentleman's agreement, Austin, as you all are aware, where, has been after us trying to break that gentleman's agreement. And the reason we, we hesitate and we stay over there is because it's beneficial to Stark County. Of the eight or nine entities, we get about more than half of the money, because we have the cities and us. The other option that we have is moving to Hidalgo County, but then we compete with 50 or so entities, but over here, I think if we competed, chances are, the county, we had a better chance of getting more money, but then the cities would, would not.
Yeah.
And, and that would hurt us, because now we might get more money, but it has to be spread throughout the county.
Yeah, because. Yeah, because, yeah, Escovadas asked for money, the city of Rio Grande asked for money, Roma asked for money.
Rio Grande, you know, they, they all get money in us, so we get five nights, so we get more than fifty percent. But, but anyhow, you know, if this continues to dwindle down to nothing, you know, it's something to consider.
Or, or Judge, one point could be that we start getting together with the sub, or the cities, or whoever wants to work with us, and join projects. That would benefit both, both sides. Because that way at least, you know, the money that would come in would, would, you know, could, could help. Let's say Roma has a certain street, and we get money, some of that money can go with the city money, same thing with La Gruya, La Gruya can apply for these things.
But that's a deal of amount, you gotta be, we gotta go for, for, for all of it or nothing, you know?
Yeah.
For the other cities, you know, what, there's nothing what we can do.
And I'm sure everyone will apply for two-fifty, so if we have five, that's a million and a quarter that will come in to start county.
Yeah.
It might not be for the county, but it still goes to the cities that are inside the county.
Yes, sir. And then, other than that, I'll, I'll have more information for those things, and I'll talk to, talk to the judge, and I'll go to the commissioners and show you the papers.
But when would you have an answer of what we can buy with that? Is that money already being granted to us?
Uh, we got the email...
Those ninety-two thousand dollars?
Friday.
We got the email Friday, and a little bit more files.
What?
We just really got the email on Friday, so we still have, we still need to get UU and C.
That's a command?
But we already, it's been approved ninety-two thousand for the county.
They're gonna allocate up to ninety-two thousand.
But I, I, I need to find out how the law was suspended.
Well, yeah, well, before we commit, we have been approved to apply for that.
No, we already got it.
Granted, no?
That was what was allotted to us, is ninety-two thousand.
It's already in?
Okay.
It's been approved, now they want, how can we spend it? I think we should argue, or you should argue, that we don't buy much, uh, equipment to, we don't need a command center, I mean, we need somebody, something to go and put out the fire, actually, out there on the ground. In my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that's what I'll indicate to them, like I said, I gotta...
Yeah, we need equipment, is what we need. Yeah, 'cause right now, we need to wait for the forestry or someone that has to...
We always have to wait for the US forestry to come in.
We need to buy one for the whole county?
No, 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 no.
No, no, no. No, si algo no so.
Siendo araya y estaba así, no te has caído de la pared.
No, 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 vamos para allá, no te tienes que ver. Pero esto del medio es parte de la gente.
Me lo llevo para salir.
Tú o yo? Me tienes mejor yo acá.
No, 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 cada quien, que cada quien, aunque sea poquito, pero cada quien que agarre su pastelito.
Any, any other thing?
No, that's it, thank you very much.
Ya no te dije un brote grande, no, te viendo chiquita, ¿eh?
Okay, moving on to item six, this is a, an action item on the preliminary approval for North Gate subdivision phase two.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. At this time, I'd like, would like to present for preliminary approval for North Gate subdivision. It's, uh, on Mr. Cantusa, uh, precinct, it's for, uh, Suntex Road. Uh, it's towards Suntex Road, uh, North Gate.
And this is preliminary?
Yes, it's, uh, thirteen acres.
This is the preliminary, preliminary...
Not a heritage?
Yes, it's a heritage.
Heritage, yeah.
Machaca?
La Machaca.
The Ultima Suntex.
The Ultima, yeah. Towards, yeah, towards the Pulveras.
De los de Pulveras, ah, están las maquinitas, va para allá.
Comenzaron los de... Está listo el canal, eh?
No vino.
El de Rosca de Boron. Canal de Rosca de Boron.
Okay, yeah. It's been moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is also an action item, and this is preliminary approval on Manchaca subdivision phase two.
Uh, yes, sir, it's about three and a half acres, more or less.
Before you do, let me, let me pass it to you, Commissioner, because I might, I have a conflict in this one.
Okay, okay, I'll take the order. Item number seven, the action on our preliminary approval for Manchaca subdivision phase two. Is this an order?
Uh, yes, sir, this is for preliminary. Yes, this, this one is under, uh, Mr. Peña's, uh...
Well, let me just, when you say preliminary, what is it, the requirement, you already got to, you already got...
Yes, we got, we got the plans, we got the plans, uh, we got the drainage reports and everything, and, uh...
Oh, I agree with you.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
I say move, for the preliminary in Manchaca.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On a poll, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner, let the record show that I did not participate.
Let the record show that the judge did not participate or wrote it on the, on this item.
Item eight is an action item, and this is to request an, an auction in, in January, and this is to get rid of any material, you know, we usually have this once a year, to get rid of anything that, that you all might have, that, that you don't need. As you all know, and all the departments know, the county is not allowed to sell, to give, to donate to anything. It has to be auctioned off, even if we get a penny or whatever, but it's got to be auctioned off, and that's the reason we do this, kind, sort of just to clean house.
Your Honor, what do we need now, that one, is that actually related to that? But I plan to call people from Richard Brothers to come and give me a, an idea how much would they give me on, on all the, the two motor grays, but I would like to take them over to them up there, be sold, here we don't get nothing, but take them over to be sold up in, they say, Houston, Dallas.
You can do that.
And...
As long as there's a record that it was auctioned...
You have to pay the holding, okay? You hold it, pay the vala.
Yeah, but I need to put it on the au, I need to put them on the auction, and, so see how much money I can, I'm gonna try to see if trade them in with, with John Deere or Caterpillar, but if they don't give me what I actually like, I'm gonna, I wanna risk it and say, take it up there, they could give me an idea of what, what, what the going price is for. There's a guy that tells me that somewhere up there, there's a guy that buys all those special, it's kind of machinery to send them to Mexico, but...
Yeah, you can, as long as it's auctioned, it's not a problem.
All right.
So...
Make the motion to, for the countywide auction.
And when is it gonna, when is it gonna be?
Okay, moved in second, discussion, it'll be in January, and I'll, I'll get the rain or someone to contact with you all and see when it's convenient for you.
Is it gonna be on a Friday or a Saturday?
It's up to you all, Commissioners, um, you can have it on Friday or Saturday. You did the latter part of, of January.
To Friday.
The only thing is, if it's on a Friday, it's gonna be early during the day, maybe half a day.
We could do it Friday morning?
Yeah.
We usually have it like at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
That's the usual time.
And the site, the arena?
You can have it at the end.
In the parking?
The parking lot.
The parking lot, the Lenex? We had it there last year.
We've had it there, one time we, we used the city's area, so the people could park over here and go to the auction. Depending on how much stuff comes in, you know?
I'll send you down there, and that way you'll be in a different date, and many got inventory lists and...
CS desk, computers, todo, 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 yo que...
Everything you don't want, get rid of it.
Therefore...
So, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item nine is the same thing we've passed before on regulating certain fireworks in the aerials. Is there a motion to approve it?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item ten is an action item, and this is to approve purchase order request forms required by the auditor. Are they in the packet? The purchase order request forms?
Yes.
They're in the packet? I didn't see them.
What is it that...
It's for new vendor list or to purchase?
No, to get a PO.
To get the vendor's number and name, I guess, is that what it is?
You have to...
It looks like this, Commissioners, and it's to request your PO number.
Okay, and, and the change is the, the vendor number?
No, this is, this item is just for the form.
Okay, but that's the one we've always used, okay?
Yes, but...
What changed on it?
Nothing changed, and I may, the reason that, that...
You're in the supporting?
The reason that Mrs. Guerra and our department are requesting this form to be approved is because sometimes we get called, that, you know, from your departments, that you all wanna purchase order number for thirty dollars. Then, when we get it back to our, to our office, it's for four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And then, you know, it's for proof or documentation that you asked for it for that amount.
Very well, is there a motion?
Move the pass.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eleven, this is the approval of the new vendors list, and this was dropped there? No. On this one, we can continue adding as we go, right?
Yes. We presented at every meeting.
Okay.
The request.
Okay. Oh, so this, this is just the, the recent ones?
Yes, these are just the new ones.
Okay.
Move the pass, vendor list.
I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twelve is an action item, and this is to approve payment of a penalty that was charged in the amount of two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty-four by IRS for failure for proper payroll tax deposit by the treasurer. Anytime payroll goes out, we have to pay IRS a certain tax, and for some reason, Mr. Peña didn't pay it in time, so we got charged twenty-eight-hundred dollars.
How many times has this happened before?
I don't think it ever happened, had it, Mr. Peña?
It has happened before.
It has?
It happened a couple of years ago.
Yeah, this, well, you know, again, just to, to let you all know that, that we are getting fined, and hopefully...
And we have to pay it anyway, so...
Yeah.
So, the call has to be made on that, on the day of the payroll, or to be, we have one business day to get it in, if, or if the deposit is over a hundred thousand, which is it. So, we call it in on Friday, we'll be there by Monday, we should be, but it, and we only bring some of the, the amount, so there's not a future that may...
And, and this certainly has nothing to do with, with the staff, you know, because they, of course, are aware, but they cannot make a check until the treasurer approves it, and, and he didn't come to work or whatever, and that's the reason we got charged.
Will you come out of your budget?
It's an automatic deposit, can't say el banco will withdraw, you don't have to make a check.
No, you have to call it in.
I don't know.
I know, because when you go pay your payroll tax, you take a slip to the bank, and the bank transfers it automatically.
Yeah, but... Yeah, this is for accounts that are over a hundred thousand.
Well, they look at you, but it should be the same, you know, it should be automatically...
That, that's not what we're...
It, it has to be called in in the grower's system.
Yeah.
Mr. Peña's actually would know, uh, would be, uh, address next to my school.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Peña's actually would address things to my school.
He would what?
Address the issue.
No, 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 que lo paguen, se towa el problema.
See?
It's only money?
Okay, is there a motion to, to go in? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item thirteen is a action item, and this is to approve bids from Creative Bus Sales for the fifty-three-ten plan.
Here are a copy of the two proposals, and this is for the grant that we got awarded for the sixty-three-ten.
Is this a handicap?
That is correct.
Va a dar otro que...
This is the new grant.
Va a dar otro que...
Te va a dar una, una carretilla, pero...
Esto es para la muerte, para nosotros.
Commissioner, can two finally, we got, got the money, and this is to go ahead and purchase?
Pa' que le dé el bozo.
It's gonna be for precinct one.
After a year, after a year, we're gonna get to purchasing, and this is what this is about.
Is that the same as mine? Is it what?
It is, it's exactly the same as yours.
Right.
We do have a bid for two proposals, but we did send these bids to Tech Start to make sure that they're okay. They did advise us that the only one that is state contract that we are able to purchase from is some creative buses. So that's why we are requesting that you approve the bid for the creative buses. It is a couple of hundred dollars. Excuse me?
These are the specs de la van, okay?
Yeah, the specs are in here, and this is everything that's included in the type two, and it's exactly the one that was awarded last year to precinct four.
That is on the show, eh?
And, I, I'm, we have another meeting, and we have to go to Tech Start to get ready for the new, another thing. So this is, we finally got to this stage, but now we're gonna flash the next one, two thousand seventeen.
And we are, like I said, we are requesting your approval for the creative buses.
Is there a motion to approve the bid?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item fourteen is an action item, and this is to approve a contract between the county and Rio Delta in preparing plans and specs for the TCDB, or CBG, program for seventeen-eighteen. Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Items fifteen through eighteen are budget amendments, I'm sorry, through seventeen are budget amendments, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, are they in order, Mr. Peña?
Move the pass.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eighteen is an action item, and this is to approve contract between Garbage, Grandi Garbage and the County of Starr for the transfer station. Ms. Guerra, is this the same as last year?
Same one, Your Honor, but the date on it, since it's gonna terminate at the end of this month, it starts from January twenty-seventh.
Move to pass.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, in favor, please say yea? Oppose? Motion carries.